recess and it's like point out this way and there's I'm not going to hit it with the chair if I but that's like it's about that.
Sure what does Jesse, what does that button do?
I shouldn't find out.
Nothing.
No. So that's why this this arm keeps catching on that every time it gets pushed in.
That may be the fleece along.
I'm gonna I'm gonna hit go here in a second. Where do when you guys are?
Right it.
Huh? Okay.
Right. Yeah, there we go. I thought maybe it dumps all these seats down into the assessor's office or something.
On top of all the file cabinets.
We get too contentious, too contentious, a hearing or meeting, just push the button. Okay, means over. No more public comment. Okay, right? It is 10 o'clock. Okay, it's 10 o'clock. It's time in our schedule for a planning hearing. And today we're going to hear a an appeal for its A P P L zero 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 two dash two two. And before we get rolling here, I'm going to go ahead and is there anybody that needs any hearing or visual assistance? Can you hear okay? Okay. I'll call for conflicts of interest from the commissioners.
Commissioner Conley had no conflict.
Commissioner Bradshaw has no conflict.
And Commissioner McDonald, I have no conflict. So we'll we'll dispense with the formalities of describing what this hearing is like unless somebody wants to hear me repeat it. And we'll go ahead and turn it over to staff to start us off here.
Sure. So this is similar to the appeal one we got earlier, I think a couple of months ago we went through. So there's a provision in the code under twelve two sixty one that allows for anyone to appeal. An administrative decision. And in that, there's an interpretation of the code, right?
We get rid of that.
Yeah, she has it on her screen.
Oh.
When I hit the okay box there.
Wake up over there.
There we go.
There you go. Well, if you're not, who is? We're in trouble.
So we don't have a formal application for someone to apply for an interpretation of the codes. This is the route that we go. To to go over the history, this is the the property in question. This and I'll kind of go over the timeline and when the building location permit. So it's not this big structure we're talking about. It's this little one right here. So it's kind of a where we're at. So this is what the structure and the and the lot looked like previous. So this is per assessor photos. Previous to any construction or anything else going on. So that that was the size and that was the location of the what the accessory dwelling in essentially what it is now, but the the original cabin. So this is like a side view of it. So it, you know, built on a slope. So there's a couple stories here. It's the real question is, you know, how close it is to the water, right? So you can see it's fairly close. We did throughout our review of this. We determined it was the entire structure is presented. So that's this this piece here. Was within the forty foot setback that's required for. Anything built within or close to the lake. So the lake has a forty foot setback from the high water mark. So you can even see on on the applicant that they show you where the the water line or rough estimate, right? So we look at a handful of different codes and I outline them fairly well, I think, in the memorandum that I submitted last week to you guys, but I'll go over each piece of it. So the B L P, the building location permit for the accessory dwelling unit. So the the small cabin there, not the big building, but the cabin was originally applied for on August tenth twenty twenty one, and it was issued on October thirteenth twenty twenty one. So in the meantime, in in that timeframe, we had a lot of conversations with Rainy Construction. They're the reps that were building this for the the homeowners. We went back and forth over the construction and what can and can't be changed on this. In the end, it was determined based on our review of the code under nonconforming structures and the different definitions that the the top level as shown there with that deck and the railing around it. Was didn't meet our code because we review that and consider it floor area and. Floor area and increase in the bulk. So it's usable space and it doubles the square footage previously. So under twelve three forty four, nonconforming structures. Under. Section A and B. So not no such nonconforming structures may be enlarged or altered in any way which increases its nonconformity. Let me pull up the code real quick. So right here, under two spots in the code, so twelve three forty or three point four is what we talk about nonconforming uses and nonconforming structures. So the intent of this is that if there's a structure built prior to this code adoption, you can't change it or increase it. It's legal nonconforming, right? They can sit there. We're not going to make someone tear it down. That's ridiculous. But you can't modify it in a way where it increases nonconformity. So that's the intent behind this code. So further, the intent of this title, nonconformity shall not be enlarged upon expanded or extended. Nor be used as grounds for adding other structures or other unpermitted uses. So essentially, it can sit like it is. If it gets destroyed, it can be rebuilt in the same manner in the same location, as long as it doesn't increase in bulk. Increase in size. They can shift walls around on the inside. They can, you know, they can add a bathroom, whatever they want to do on the inside of the footprint, but it can't increase its nonconformity. They can't even increase the pitch of the roof because that increases bulk as we define it. In twelve three oh eight or eight oh two. So then we look under. Nonconforming structures, so twelve three forty four. So. A, no such nonconforming structure shall be enlarged upon or altered in a way which increases its nonconformity. No structures or portion thereof may be altered or decreased. Or maybe so you can you can decrease it. You can move the walls in that reduces the nonconformity. We can't increase it. So I think that's what it. So and then under B, it talks about the destruction, right? So if it's destroyed, as long as you build it and it doesn't increase its nonconformity, you can rebuild it within two years. So if we go back to those photos, when we're doing our review of this this project. So this was the project I proposed. Here's a couple satellite photos that were interesting. So here's photos we had from two thousand fourteen. So that shows the previous, you know, before anything changed. And then in twenty nineteen is when they demoed. Now you can see they didn't touch this part, but right back here was destroyed. Sometimes. So there's that two year clause. We figure it was within a month from this two thousand nineteen to whatever they submitted in August. So this is well, August fourth and they submitted August tenth. So we gave the benefit of the doubt that they're applying for and moving forward with this reconstruction of the nonconforming portion of this, right? So we let that. I wouldn't say let it pass. We determined that, you know, it's it's close enough to within that two years, there's some benefit of the doubt. It was reasonable. So. So here's the as it sits today, this is how as it was before. So the original original cabin was built in nineteen fifty nine. So it definitely is falls within our our nonconforming structure code. So. So then it comes to we issued the B L P building patient permit in October thirteenth with the provision that. This is from the email that was submit that was sent to. It says, there's a condition of approval that no railing shall be installed on the roof, nor shall the roof function as a deck in any way. So the reason we decided that is because we we determined that it was an increase in use and increase in bulk. Back to our nonconforming code. So the way we get there, we read over twelve three forty four, nonconforming structures. Then we look over. Then there's a series of of definitions to review, right? So is this an increase? And so we it definitely falls within the nonforming structure. And then we look at at bulk. So eight oh two. The bulk, the size of the building or structure and the relationship to the structure and the features, including lot size, open space, yard, lot coverage, height, impervious surface. And floor areas, floor area ratios. Okay, so floor area ratio. So we look over floor area. The sum of the now here's where. So the sum of the horizontal area for each floor or building as measured from the interior faces of the exterior walls or the center line of the walls separating two buildings. So staff has always interpreted decks as that are attached to the structures and we we charge for those when we do our building location permits. So we've always considered those part of the floor area ratio, even though they don't have horizontal walls. So essentially, if you have a patio cover, if you were to drop or even just an open deck, if you were to drop walls on it, what's the area? Moving on to structure. So the title twelve definition of structure is fairly vague. I'll give it that. Essentially, just something that can be constructed. What's that? Oh, that's storage. There we go. So any object constructed erected. So essentially, just is it built on the ground, including towers, smoke stacks? So then we look at title eleven. So this is for a building location permit. So what is title eleven called a structure? So it calls out specifically a combination assembly. So if if it can be built, and it also includes right here, towers, tanks, decks, platforms, porches. So we would consider the deck on top of the structure as submitted in the building location permit. A structure itself. So does it have a flow area ratio? Absolutely. Does it increase the bulk then? Yes, it increases the bulk. It all falls within there and you can't increase that nonconforming. So essentially, they're doubling the nonconformity because they're adding a floor area, a deck on top of a previously existing nonconforming structure. You follow me the logic?
I don't know that I agree with.
Okay, so that's that's the staff interpretation. So that was that's what was issued on the building location permit last year. So with that. Over the course of the winter, there I guess there was some talk at Rainy Construction. They they called me. No, they didn't call. What they did is submitted. An administrative variance, which was deemed adequately incomplete because it didn't really follow it. And what they were essentially asking for was an interpretation of the code. We disagree with your interpretation. It's well past the B L P timeline for an appeal. So what they wanted is to essentially amend their B L P. They didn't submit an amendment. What they did was submitted this administrative variance, asking for essentially interpretation of the code. We can look at that application if you guys want, but essentially, that's what they were getting at. So after talking with the reps there and figuring out clarifying what they're asking, they said, hey, we disagree. This is what we're this is what we're really after. And what are our options? I said, well, one option, you can you can pursue a full variance, right? And go that route. The timeline is this. You can, we can submit to you our interpretation of the code and you can challenge that. Or you can leave it as is. So they said, hey, let's go, you know, route number two. So that's where we got. So we submitted and or we issued this administrative determination of those three code sections on March twenty first. And within the ten day time period, they applied for an appeal under, you know, twelve two sixty one. So just the appeal process. And this that's what brought us here today. So that's our logic train and how we interpreted the code, how we got there. It's been staffs up to this point. It's been staffs. Continual like this, like this is the route we do business. And this is how we establish area ratios and and whatnot. So we recommend that the the board uphold the administrative decision that we made earlier or last month. Any questions? I also have Tyson here who worked on with the applicants during the whole process. And asked or answered a lot of questions. I was pulled in to kind of help determine stuff, but he has a deeper knowledge on this if you guys want to ask him the questions as well. Yeah.
You know, this is all a good dialogue.
Right.
Areas underneath decks, porches, any kind of videos. So it's, you know, this is good.
You identify yourself with the record.
Tyson Lewis.
Okay, thanks.
So either one of you can answer. The the funny thing is, it's not funny, probably. You guys have put a lot of effort into this, but it's a roof and a deck kind of thing, you know what I mean? So it's kind of like you're not expanding on the actual footprint. Or at least I don't think you are, unless that overhang is expanding.
There was.
Actual footprint.
Right.
Um, and you're also bringing the the bulk down because instead of a peak or the fury going on a flat roof.
Sure.
I I guess, I mean, I I'm struggling because I just from a logical standpoint, it's like. Um, I'm not sure that it is actually increasing.
Anything.
Yeah.
So I think for me, I've heard the definitions of a lot of things, but I haven't heard the definition of the roof.
Okay.
Because it does, in fact, keep rain out.
Why don't we, well, I was just saying, if you guys have any questions, let's ask questions, but we still have to hear the applicant's presentation that we can.
Oh, it's just Jeremy.
Only because I'm seeing the usable space argument versus the, I mean, it's, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions for staff?
No, thank you. Hey, Jeremy.
New players.
I guess kind of cool building.
Yeah.
That seems to be the best one.
Oh, beautiful. Thank you, commissioners. I'm here today representing Rainy Construction on this appeal of a administration administrative decision. My name is Jeremy Grimm, owner of Whiskey Rock Planning. It's April fourteenth, two thousand twenty two. And specifically, we are appealing the determination on B L P twenty twenty one, one thousand Hunt Creek Block One Lot Forty.
Before we get started, where is this?
This is on the east side of Priest Lake.
Okay.
About halfway up from Kavanaugh. So let's see. First, first and foremost, I I appreciate staffs, the way they've handled all this. It's been really good. And I also relate to them. I used to sit in Milton's chair in both Wyoming and Sandpoint. And the first thing I want to say is there are some portions of code that are either not clear cut or require interpretation. And especially in today's anti-growth environment where everything's under the microscope. Sometimes from staff's perspective, it's it's easier on these these questionable interpretations to, you know, take the conservative route and and ultimately let the elected officials make that decision. So, you know, these guys aren't taking the heat for making an interpretation. So.
Thanks, Milton.
Yeah.
Don't you shake your head?
That's right. We were.
That's why you got paid the big bucks. But, you know, just to go to go through this, this all started, or at least I got involved on March twenty first, when Jake initiated basically the denial of the building permit based on that railing on top of the roof. And specifically in that email I've got up here, he says, with the deck on top of the proposed structure, it's an increase in floor area and therefore an increase in legal lung in the bulk of the legal nonconforming structure. So the basis for the denial is that the unenclosed rooftop constitutes an increase in floor area, therefore an increase in bulk to a legally nonconforming structure. So as staff pointed out, here was the original structure. They're effectively just replacing it with a new revised building there. And this is this is sort of what's this is the depiction of what they're trying to build. You can see the the lower A D U there with the railing around the roof. And that is the point of contention. That's the the really only thing we're challenging here is moving forward with that railing. Just an elevated view, you can kind of see how it's proposed to be utilized on top of the roof there. When we look at sort of the schematics here, it's it's literally just a railing on top of a flat roof. So when we look at Monterey County revised code twelve three forty four, nonconforming structure, it clearly states such structures may be continued as long as it remains lawful, subject to the following provisions. And then it jumps down to D, no nonconforming portion of a structure may be enlarged or altered in a way in any way that increases its bulk, such as, and it goes on to say, by increasing floor area ratios. So that's really the point of contention. Are we increasing the floor area ratio? We contend that the inclusion of rooftop deck on the proposed A D U does not increase the nonconformity by way of increasing the bulk. And to do that, we look at a couple of things. First, Monterey County revised code twelve eight oh two bulk, the size of buildings or structures and their relationship to other structures and features, including dot, 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 floor area ratios. It also says, you know, including lot areas, open space, yards, lot coverage, height, impervious surface ratios. As proposed, this railing to allow a safe occupancy of the the roof does not increase the lot area, does not increase or affect open space, does not affect yards, lot coverage, height, previous surface or floor area. So we would contend that it does not affect the bulk. And then when you look at floor area, as staff pointed out, areas of each floor of a building measured from the interior faces of the exterior walls to the center line of walls separating two buildings. So we we do not have walls on the roof. So that interpretation of is this floor area is is what we're challenging. And to to really, you know, go a little deeper, you we we look at a couple of things, the International Building Code. So the two thousand twelve I B C talks about occupancy of rooftop spaces without structures above. And it it says that it doesn't technically qualify as a story per the definition. And this is that definition from the two thousand twelve I B C, a story, dot, 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 between the upper surface of a floor and the upper surface of the floor or roof above. There's no floor roof above this this rooftop. And says from the top of the floor finish to the top of the ceiling joists, or where there is no not a ceiling to the top of the roof rafters. So on top of this garage, there is no ceiling. There are no rafters. Therefore, we contend it is not a story. Further, I B C made some changes in two thousand eighteen that helped to clarify this because this is an issue that planners struggle with all over. And it five oh three one four occupied roofs, a roof or portion thereof shall be permitted. And it goes on to say, the area of the occupied roof shall not be included in the building area as regulated by another section of the I B C. So we feel that, you know, when you pull into context, the broader interpretation and definitions in I B C, whether or not Monterey County adheres to it, it's industry standard and that the proposed rooftop deck does not constitute an increase in the bulk of the structure or an increase in the nonconformity of the proposed building. So according to staff, I've done some creative PowerPoint scrubbing here. This would be the 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 B L P that would be approved effectively. And you can see I've I've greened out there the railing. So there's there's the same structure, no railing. This is fine. From another view, this would be the same structure, no increase in bulk, nonconforming. So this would 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 again, no railing. This would be fine. But as soon as we add a a safety railing around that roof, it becomes illegal because it's now some kind of official deck and based on their interpretation, which I disagree with, is constituting bulk and floor. So that's that's sort of the long and short of it. I've got Levi from Rainy Construction here if you want to go deeper on anything, but I feel like it's one of those interpretations that it's hard for staff to make. And rightly sits with you folks to determine whether adding a railing is is really adding bulk and floor area, which we would contend it is not.
So Jeremy, on the candle lever part of that. Is that further out? Or is that the way it exists?
I mean, yeah, the original one, remember they had that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the original ones.
Like it's further out.
Yeah, it's staff and the applicant aren't. There there are no other issues about and footprint or anything. It's just the railing that would trigger this interpretation that it's now increasing the bulk.
Some people find railings a fence. You should have the freedom to fall off that thing if you want.
Where you drink more option.
Yep.
You refer to it as the drunk fence, but yeah.
So I'll throw in one little thing and then Bill can straighten me out on it. I B C, most everything they have is a definition. I'm pretty sure you'll find case law supporting those definitions. And for me, it's not a floor space because it's not under a roof. And it is, in fact, a roof. And as far as Monterey County being able to tell me what I can do on my roof, whether it's flat or at a pitch, if I want to set a lawn chair on top of my roof. I'm not sure they can pass a code telling me I can't do that. I'm pretty sure that would be contested in court and lose. So.
Yeah, on any other roof, you'd be dead after that. So it wouldn't matter. Normal pitch roof.
Yeah.
You'd have fallen.
Well, you'd have to be on the crest.
Okay, there you go.
Are some really good tinny shoes.
So I just wanted to speak. Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. Why don't we go and you guys have any questions before we close for deliberation? Because then there's some good conversation we can have a deliberation. You want to rebut? Yeah, never mind. I'm just kidding. Yeah, go ahead. You can rebut.
Not today, no. Absolutely.
So the condition of approval that was placed on the B L P wasn't that there was no railing. It was state specifically, no railing shall be installed or or the roof on the roof, nor shall the roof function as a deck in any way. So it wasn't that we're against the railing. It's really the can really it comes down to the interpretation of floor area ratio, right? So it's the the fireplaces you see in the picture. It's the stairs leading up to it. We don't care if someone is has a deck on top of their house. What we care about is the nonconforming structure. They can you can if there's a house in the middle of the woods and you're not a nonconforming structure, you want to put a flat roof on it and you know, take a nap on top of the roof. That's fine. You know, we're not telling people what they can and can't do on top of the roof. What we're talking about is increasing the floor area of a nonconforming structure. Okay, as far as. And yeah, as far as the the setback from the lake, right? Because we've determined that's not in contest here, right? We're not we're not saying that it's not a nonconforming structure. We deemed it is. The applicants agree. That's not what they're disagreeing. They're they're disagreeing on whether or not this is a debt, right? International building code is great, but it doesn't apply to our county. We don't have building codes. It's it's a great exercise in in seeing what other peoples do, but really, we have our code to to look at. We have our code to review and our code to interpret. So I think it's up to the commission to determine whether or not it's not whether or not this is. You know, practical, it comes down to, is this a usable space? And if it is, that's an increase in floor area. And if that's an increase in floor area, there's increase in bulk. We're doubling the square footage of a nonconforming structure. So this has been in decks, whether they're covered or not, attached to a structure have always been charged for the building location permit. It's not square footage, right? That that has been the practice of the county. So if you were to reverse this and say this isn't a structure, do we then charge for this deck or not? Do we just let it go by and let them build it as is? Is it a user is it a user usable space? So.
The appropriate path forward for this would be a variance. We have made many structures go through the variance process and wanted to increase the bulk or the floor inside the shoreline setback. It's just it's been the process that has been followed for years in this. And so to change that decision now would be would would be to change policy in the way that we've done this. Not that there's a problem with it, but we have a path forward and that's through the variance process.
So I guess my only issue is that how many times do we see a deck on top of it? As functioning as a roof and you you see where I'm getting. I mean, you know, when you're talking about deck and definition of deck, it's it's a it's a structure off the front of the building or something like that, that is actually increasing the the
The footprint.
Ground, the area that is covered by some sort of this doesn't. This is the same area. I mean, yeah, I get it. And that's why this definition is, you know, because this probably doesn't come up much or ever. And I don't agree with Milton there that it's going to set some sort of a precedence that then the.
Well, yeah, so I. I'm telling you, the precedence is already there because they're all over the county.
Well.
So now you're mad about the fireplace?
It's obvious that it was intended for you.
Right. Yeah. Okay, so a couple of things I want to cover. I as far as conservative approach, Jeremy mentioned, we we actually like planning to take conservative approaches really is something that really needs coming forward because there is technically going to be some kind of precedence set here based on our decision if we if we choose to to approve the appeal.
At the very least, if you were going to go that route, could you please also state in your deliberations that this applies only to this unique factual circumstance and not to
Not to all.
Decks that the conventional decks that are
Second story there.
That are, yeah, that are not that are not on what would otherwise be considered a roof. Because I think that's what they're driving at is that, you know, people are placing
Right.
Decks that do increase that are the conventional style. If if they were to use this deliberation, if you guys were to approve this. If they were to use this deliberation, if you guys were to approve this as evidence for the fact that decks shouldn't be, shouldn't be considered square footage for those ratios, that can be a big problem.
I think I can articulate that. So if I may continue.
Sure.
Okay. So a couple of things here that come to mind. So when I, when I start looking at increasing bulk, to me it sounds more like increasing capacity. And I get that we're increasing, it would be increasing the use of the building. However, it's not like they're adding another apartment. So you'd have increased occupancy. But it's going to be the same people sleeping up there that would be sleeping otherwise inside. It's not like it's going to have a separate address, it's going to be, it's going to be a separate structure. My background is in roofing, commercial roofing, and I've seen a ton of these on commercial roofs. And it's a nice usable space. I understand the conundrum that staff is in with respect to our code. But quite frankly, I am a problem with the fireplace. But I, but quite frankly, I don't see, I don't see the, I mean, I shouldn't say that, I see the issue. I think Bill made a very, very good point that if we are going to rule to go with the appeal, approve the appeal, that we need to make sure we, it's a one offer, we define it as only, only decks on roofs that don't expand the footprint of the existing structure. Follow me, does that make any sense?
Pretty much, yeah. That's pretty much what I was saying. That does set the precedence that, you know, if you have this situation or similar situation, it's very likely that maybe other people are going to be like, whoa, that's a good, good idea. And maybe you knock the roof off of it and make your deck out. It's a possibility. As far as like this opening up the.
The floodgates.
Floodgates to have a deck now off to the side and all that stuff. I don't see that as, is even possible.
But I do think it's important that if we do decide to approve this, that we articulate the fact that this is only on the, on the existing roof as it's built, the existing footprint and not any extension of any building or.
But it's not the existing roof because the existing roof was a.
Right, but the footprint's not changing. So what that would do, that would pick up the potential of somebody adding a deck onto an existing structure, which would then increase the footprint.
But you also might encourage, you also might encourage people if this decision becomes. Yeah, instead of when they're looking at renovating, you know, a nonconforming old cabin, that they might, that they may adopt this design choice.
They almost absolutely will.
So that could have that consequence.
As soon as you throw a roof over that, then it becomes another floor. But right now, it's, it would be operating as a.
Yeah. So we issue our building location permit. Determine the fee based on the square foot floor area that is being used.
Right.
And so, and so we didn't bill him for that roof because he wasn't going to use it.
Right. No, I completely understand that.
So that needs to be included then because.
Well, either that, either that or either that or I don't disagree with going the variance route. I mean, I think that makes the most sense because I think it cleans it up.
Well, then that, in that case, you would uphold the.
Right, we would uphold it and have them go for a variance, right, exactly.
So that's another option as well. And then that's in keeping with, with the way that we've been operating.
Right, I think that keeps it, I think it keeps it legally clean. And it's something when we, as we work through the comp plan and look at the ordinances, we need to consider, you know, things like this because I think it's a great idea. I mean, I don't see any real.
Good use of the.
Yeah.
My problem with is if you do a variance, then you're, you're going to be hearing a variance is going to double the square footage is what it's going to say. And it really doesn't.
No, no. To me, I think it's more about making sure that we are treating everybody the same. And so what the variance does is then it attaches the fee that goes along with this unless there's a shortcut just to attach a fee the way it sits now.
Without determining it being a floor area.
Well, let me ask you a question.
No, no, I, no, I, trust me, I totally understand what's going on here.
This is a question for, for planning and zoning. In a 24 hour period, is it more roof or floor? Because it's, it's a roof 24/7. It's not a floor 24/7. The floor underneath that is a floor 24/7.
No one's at my house.
No, but it's functioning as a roof 365 days a year.
You guys, the bottom line is that, and Jeremy can kind of hit this one on the head. There is room for interpretation either way you go here.
Right.
And you would be given deference either way. So if you were to uphold their decision, that would be, I think, very defensible. If you were to adopt Jeremy's interpretation likewise. That's, you are given that latitude as the people who get to interpret the code. So probably good arguments on both sides.
Yeah, and I guess my only.
Pick one horse and run.
My only real concern is I understand the precedence argument and the way we treated these in the past. And I just think that based on that, in sort of changing the code, which we can't do today, I think the going for a variance would be the viable solution unless there's another option.
With the grace that, I mean, obviously with the backlog and the work, I mean, right now it's like a six month.
We love the work. Sure.
I might have another option.
Okay.
Do I need to stand anywhere?
Make, just make sure you can talk to that microphone and identify your name for the record.
Levi Bush with Ramey Construction. Just to clarify a couple of points. The planning department was great when we did this and I appreciate their effort and I appreciate their commitment to just making sure that everybody's treated equally and I do understand their perspective. And so when we were working through this permit process, I actually resubmitted the plans. I crossed out the steps, crossed out the fireplace, crossed out the railing. And that's how we were able to get the permit in the first place. But no, because of the fact that we were in that real tight window of being able to get this done at all because our two years was just about up, I knew that we needed to revisit this. And so one of the things that I would just throw out there, I mean, I don't know that, and you guys can probably speak to this more than anyone, just because I don't know all the ins and outs of it. But just from a, from a homeowner, property owner's perspective, I am the owner's representative. And so, you know, when I have conversations with them, I mean, you did nail it when you said if a person wants to hang out on his roof, even if it's the 1212, it's his business, right?
More interesting.
But, you know, in my mind, it's like, okay, as a builder, you know, I'm always thinking about limiting liability. And right now we do have a building that is fairly close to the ground. Just because we don't have steps, it's easy to get on. If people do decide to hang out up there, which we probably know that at some point people will. You know, if somebody falls off, is it going to increase liability for the county, for us? Because we said, hey, you guys can't have a railing up there for safety or if they're maintaining.
If we uphold, if we uphold their decision, it doesn't.
Yeah, I guess my thought is though is maybe we don't change the decision because we don't want to bend all the rules. And maybe we don't go through the variance process because then it does change the rules and it gets messy. Maybe we just let it, let the owners do what they want to do. And if they decide to put a rail up there, then nobody comes after them for it. I mean, in my mind, that's probably the simplest thing.
Yeah, I just, I'll tell you my concern. So the variance would actually, it wouldn't change the rules, it would be something specific to this.
Okay.
Structure.
Case by case.
Which is why the variance seems like the better route to me unless, unless planning has another route.
No, I mean, it almost sounds like that's what you would be granting today would be a variance. And so I think it does need to go through the process.
And I think Bill hit it though, I mean, you're, that interpretation is what this is all about and that, and boy, you could take it either way. And I truly believe that it could be interpreted in the direction.
Both arguments are made in good faith, that's the point.
Yeah, and I don't, you know, and as far as impact, I mean, precedence wise, yes, technically it would create, it would create a precedence. However, is there going to be a mass flood and people coming in wanting to?
Knock their roof off.
I guess my question was, what is the consequence? We just, if these guys put up a railing, like what happens?
That's a building violation.
Yeah.
And even just, even just knowing that, I mean, we wouldn't want it, I mean.
That's an artist.
I probably would have said, you probably shouldn't mention that at this hearing. Now we're knowledgeable of it.
Well, if you weren't before, then I'm.
Well, I mean, there's a reality versus what we're, what we know, what we're supposed to know. As far as this context goes, reality is, yeah, if that were my place, I'd just throw a railing.
Oh, I guess, I don't want, I guess I don't want.
Sorry, it's the truth. You know me, I don't like rules, so. Right.
We would have a liability, I'm glad that you're worried about county's liability. But I mean, it's pretty obvious that we're saying you can't use this as a deck and if you do, you would be on ground. That's pretty obvious and.
It's an interesting one. It's a lot more interesting than I thought it would be.
Chairman, I mean, by approving the appeal, you could also just, staff would be aware now that this is something that needs to be cleaned up or tweaked in code. And instead of going through the six month variance process, you know, staff would just address this in code changes coming up.
What's the, what's the window for, don't we have, don't we have some code amendments coming up?
Yeah, but if I have to run it back through.
Oh, yeah.
So that would take six months, we could do a variance.
What's the quickest it can be done?
Variance?
My concern is that, is that definition of floor, it's defined in the book.
Right.
And it's the way we calculate fees and we calculate fees for decks, the pados. And so we're, so we are doubling the floor area on the BLP for fees. So that's what you're having to address. So, so the code needs to be changed if we're going to do that.
And it would be, wouldn't it be inconsistent to consider an ordinary deck for square footage purposes when you're doing that calculation? But then somehow because it's on the roof, and we all agree that it's the functional, it is, it is a deck, right? It's probably the exact same thing, but except it's on the building instead of to the side. We're not going to call it that anymore.
Well, no, and I don't have an issue with, I think the fee's appropriate. Right. I think that's, I mean, I think that's the key element here is the fee is appropriate. Because now it's going to be, it's going to function as a deck, just as it would, just as the deck on the back of the main building.
Right. So the problem is, that's, that's kind of, those are two inconsistent positions.
Right.
If it's, if it's appropriate because it is treated as a deck and therefore we're counting it as square footage, that's one position, but you can't hold that at the same time as saying it's on a roof, so it's not really a deck. Because then it has to be one or the other.
Why can't it be on a roof and a deck?
A rooftop deck.
Because if it is a rooftop deck, it's still a deck. Counting a square footage.
But, but I just, but here's, to me, here's the distinction.
You know?
That creates a difference is that, let's, well, I'll use the deck that's on the main building, that's an extension of the footprint.
Right.
Where with this one, it's not extending the footprint, it's utilizing the existing footprint.
Yeah, it hasn't changed footprint at all.
So, but again, when we talk about bulk, so we all agreed that, you know, if you built this thing five stories into the air, it wouldn't change the footprint.
That would change the bulk.
It would increase the bulk.
Because you would have more room to use.
You have more living space, yeah.
Right? And that's, I guess, again, we're all, we're dancing. We're arguing the same thing. I mean, whether it's, and Jeremy alluded, he's like, whether is this, is this considered a separate floor because it doesn't have a roof on it?
Or walls.
Is it, right? It still sounds as though it's going to be used. Again, I don't know, I'm just, I'm not trying to help you guys make the decision. I'm just saying.
You're not making it any easier.
I think that those, what Dan, what you're trying to talk about with like capturing it for purposes of square footage when calculating fees is, you can't have that position while, while still saying it's just a roof.
I think we can.
Well, we could, it would just be internally inconsistent.
We don't calculate, we don't calculate a two story house as only having, we don't, we don't count one floor area. We count two floor.
Right, and now I completely understand.
And so, and I'm not saying that this is two story, I'm just saying that.
See, where I'm struggling is it, is it, is looking at, you know, actual use definition. So another story would be a space that could be full time occupied. Living. Where this is a more of a recreational occupancy, it's not a full time, no one's going to live up there, you know, year round.
Yeah, we're really getting messy here.
I know, I know.
The shoreline setback.
I know. And you know how I feel about shoreline setback, so.
I know. Even a deck on a second floor, that you know, you access from the second floor, you would consider that.
Right.
Usual space.
Oh, absolutely.
We're out there three hours a day as well.
I don't disagree, but again, if that deck extended beyond the existing footprint, then it would be of a greater concern as opposed to a deck that was within the same footprint. Yeah, no, and I, and I, just so you guys know, I understand absolutely where you're coming from. And I know you're trying to keep this consistent, which good luck with that. But, but I, but I just struggle with the, I mean, and I, and part of it is, I just think it's, it's a great use of something that normally gets no use. The roof, the roof's kind of an other thing other than it's the primary waterproofer for the entire building. Now, that owner has the ability to enjoy that, that elevated space. You know?
I always did, they just had to hang out in the attic so far.
And then people start saying weird things about you. Spend a lot of time in the attic.
So there, this too, which is a variance, if I were a good businessman, I'd say, yeah, we should go through a variance. Because then the client, I mean, my fees are going to be over a thousand dollars.
Why don't you pay your fees?
You can donate.
Be pro bono work.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a simple solution that allows code to be to the future for this particular landlord or landlord. Certainly appreciate.
Yeah, my concern, the reason I say variance is only because it cleans it up for us legally. And that's my, that's the other concern with this is that if we do it for one, we need to do it for all. And what kind of precedence we, I mean, and not, you know anything about me, I'm not a big fan of this, the way we've always done it. But when it comes to ordinances, we do have to look at ordinance and say, okay, this is our ordinance that we're working with today. In the future, it may be different. That's why, you know, the variance or even waiting until we can do and could do an ordinance change to include this, to make it cleaner would be the two options I would lean towards. I mean, frankly, I don't see an issue with this other than knowing what the issue is that the planning's struggling with.
And I think we could actually add roof deck and, and not, you know, and explain it in the new verbiage and talk about it and talk about how that is different than this.
And there would be a charge for it. Because it is a space that's going to be used.
So the decks that, you know, like side decks, front decks, whatever, that expand the footprint, they're charged for at the same square footage rate as the house?
If they're defined in Title 11 as a structure, so yeah. By square footage.
Interesting. Well, here's some heartburn for you. When I get my tax assessment, my house is based on living square footage. That's anything that's covered in walls and a roof. A deck is taxed at a different rate.
Yeah, but we're talking apples and oranges here, we're talking assessment versus.
So, so we've got, we've got two different definitions in the same building. One's on the second floor, one's on the third floor, and then the other one's across the hall from the second floor.
Yeah, right.
So, so, so deck is deck.
They charge for decks.
Living space is living space. So maybe you need to clean up the language where it doesn't say floor space, but living space. That's within the wall's actual living space. Space, it's usable space and should be assessed, but it's still, that's a roof. Yeah, so, yeah, and these things.
I want to find a solution for this and avoid it getting messy, so let's talk about it.
It's too late, it's already messy.
Well, let's, let's talk, planning, what's, what's a viable solution? Is the ordinance change?
What's the fastest solution for these guys?
I know, I agree, I think the variance, but I, but I think they're looking at window, there's, it's going to be six months, three months.
We're going to, we're going to hear something.
Either way.
It's, why would it have to go to planning? Or to, what? Or why would it have to go to zoning then? Or I mean, no, I mean for the code change. Because we aren't doing it for the one that's coming down the road.
Yeah, I know. I can add it to one of the ones.
Well, that's what I'm thinking. We're picking back it on some of the stuff you've got coming our direction. And then how soon do those come through?
I mean, it's 47 days to here. By the time I know the same thing.
What do you think, Bill?
What do I, I, um, I tend to, I, I tend to agree with, with planning on this one, although I do appreciate Jeremy's argument. Um, it really boils down to how you perceive, I mean, Steve's made the argument that a roof is a roof. And if you happen to use it, even with a deck, with a railing on it, and so be it. My general understanding of a roof is one that people don't crawl up on their roofs and use it for pleasure. They don't. Um, so the fact that this one, even if it could be used that way because it's flat, that we're all, we're all adults here and we realize that this is being designed to be used as a deck. And to me, the distinction between, like, if we've always treated decks as square footage, whether it's on the side of the building or it's on top, um, as long as we're considering that as part of the ratio, the footage ratio, to me, that's a distinction without a difference.
Right.
Um, a deck is a deck, whether it's on the top of the roof or it's to the sun. So
I get that.
So the, the difference is whether or not you, if, if you, if you just don't agree with that, if you, you believe that because it is on the roof, that somehow distinguishes it from an ordinary deck, that it shouldn't be included in the square footage calculation, then that would be why you chose to go the other way. I think, does that sound right?
Right. But I think the problem with, I, I think it should be included in the square footage calculation. But the problem is that it adds bulk and we we run into the problem with the, um, non-conforming
Right.
Increase.
Well, yeah, that's why we're here.
That's why we're here.
Right. But I
That's why I said you can't, you gotta pick one of those, you know, you gotta do one or the other.
Well, then we can go with option C. And as we, we do an ordinance change and in 47 days it comes before us and we can change the language so it excludes
Roof decks.
Roof decks that, that fit within the existing footprint.
So if you're going to, if you're acknowledging that it needs an ordinance change, then you would, that, that would suggest that you have to
Uphold.
Deny the appeal, uphold the decision now when the, when the, when the change is made. Um, however you want that to look, if it, assuming it directly addresses this scenario because of the fact you're doing a change, fixes problem, you encourage them to reapply?
Amend the BLP.
Amend the BLP and then
That's the fastest route.
You guys have an issue with that?
Does it stop my current construction schedule?
Only on, only on the
Is for the railing.
All the other stuff on the roof.
So I can keep building.
Okay. You have an issued BLP.
Yeah. And that's the other, that was the other thing I was taking into consideration too. They don't want to stop.
It'd be just railing.
What would you, before you go, what would you guys, what's the, what are we trying to, you want to, you want a code section to say what, when the definition of
On non-conforming, you would say it excludes rooftop decks that don't, that don't expand the footprint.
That's, that's not included, shall not be used in the, in the footage ratio.
Yeah.
Yeah. Non-conforming use. So we would have to be changing the non-conforming use.
Yeah. Let me pull up the
What, couldn't we just do it as far, as part of the definition of the, I'm just thinking, I mean, I guess there's more than one way to skin the cat, right? Just in the, in the definition of, of footed floor ratio or whatever that terminology is. Say, you know, for purposes of this calculation, we should, um, you know, rooftop decks shall not be
Well, then we wouldn't capture the fee for it.
Yeah. We want to still be able to capture the fee. Yeah. But just, it just would not, it wouldn't violate the
Yeah. So we change it.
It wouldn't violate the increase in bulk.
Yes. Yeah, we do that. We don't have to touch the non-conforming part of it. We just change the way we define increase in bulk. That's the way I would do it.
Yeah. I think this is the best way to skin this cat.
Sound right, Jeremy there?
And I'm sorry, it's going to take 47 days, but I think that's yeah, as long as they can keep building, we can get this, this thing fixed.
We're going fix. Milton has technology.
Yeah. I mean,
Order your railing. So, you know, I
Yeah, I was gonna say, by the time you
I'd get orders now and it wouldn't be there.
It will be until October. So.
I don't, they might not want it now. Talking fire tape. Okay, there you go.
I know they're also working on a flood development permit unless that's already been issued. I don't, I don't recall the
On this project?
Mm-hmm. I know.
It shouldn't change.
Somewhere down the line. I saw
I think, but I think that's the best route I'll win because it's still, now we, now we retain consistency with the way code existing. We change the code so it fits. We don't have the issue with any kind of potential precedents.
Remover of the roof hadn't changed, so that shouldn't affect flood thing.
And I think the idea is cool as hell. I, I, I mean, I, so the commercial side.
Great use of space.
I saw these all the time.
And they're all over the county.
I, I just, I designed it.
Exactly like that. I have seen them.
Probably they just didn't go through this process.
Probably not. They just showed up.
But I know I did, in deference to the planning department, I completely understand the position. And I agree.
Um, we want to play one.
We haven't made a motion yet.
So our, so our motion is going, going to be to, uh, uphold planning's decision and deny the, the appeal.
Because we have one.
Yeah.
A motion.
But I don't know. Sometimes on these appeals, it gets confusing. Are we?
Oh, no, it's, it's
You uphold the administrative.
Right.
Yeah.
Top ones. Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to uphold the administrative decision of the Bonner County Planning Department for the interpretation of Bonny County or BCRC 12 dash 344, 12 dash 802 and 12 dash 806.
I would second that.
Okay. We have a motion a second. All those in paper say aye. Oh, sorry. Rule call vote. My bad. Aye.
Aye.
Okay. It's, uh, 10:56 and we'll go ahead and adjourn this hearing.
Jeremy always brings us the interest.